Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, January twenty fourth at seven thirty P M in the board meeting room. My comments will be brief. I just want to extend a big thank you to everyone that attended Super Saturday. I think it was a very productive day as always. Thanks to our partners on Board of Finance, R T M Education, R T M F and B, C D S P and C P A C and for the public that commented. We averaged about thirty five, thirty eight people on Zoom. We had a packed house here. While we had a lot of good questions and a lot of good conversation and we ended about ten fifteen minutes over schedule. So I think success in the end. We've got a lot of follow up that the administration's working through. And we'll continue. We'll start going through some of those questions this evening and then we've got meetings over the next couple of weeks with some of our partners and we'll continue to move through the budget process. But again, thank you for all that participated in Saturday. So we've got a full schedule this evening, some exciting presentations on H H R. So we'll keep things moving. Michelle will move to public comment.
Good evening. Would anyone in person like to make a public comment? You'll have the three minutes to comment. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Diane Urban, Ten Crane Road. I am the C D S P D E I and Outreach Chair. Tonight, these comments are my own, though they are influenced by what I hear in this position. I have to say it's disheartening to see that one mention of diversity, equity, inclusion in the proposed budget is in the liad item in R C nineteen, which would dedicate some consulting services to D E I work. Goal two of the strategic plan is fostering a culture that supports wellness, diversity and inclusion. As we have rightfully put focus on the mental health needs of our students and staff this year, I will reiterate that mental health and D E I are not mutually exclusive. I'm reminding you all that you also have a responsibility to address the extremely damaging experiences our students have shared with you at this podium in October twenty twenty one that they've endured within our schools. And while there may be funds for consulting, the liad item says the dollar amount is also for professional development and elementary math instruction. Where's their space for recommendations put forth as a result of the district D E I team's equity audit? How do we put the equity statement into action? This budget proposal will place the D E I team in year three, and while there remains work to be done as far as understanding the underlying inequities in our district, there is a clear and immediate need to put some structure and guidance in place to support our students and teachers. In tonight's materials, the winter twenty twenty three update says P T O is partnering with schools to provide diverse enrichment opportunities and parent programming. Yet this has proved extremely challenging for many of our schools' D E I chairs. We are sometimes without P T O Executive Board support, building administration support and or district level support. We have asked the administration for direction and support, a clear communication down to the building level that D P S does expect diverse enrichment opportunities. So it's disappointing to see the proposed budget come with little to no articulation of how D P S will continue D E I work according to the district's strategic goal. It remains challenging to encourage and support an inclusive school community without a clear vision of what that looks like holistically.
Thank you for speaking this evening. Anyone else in the audience? Michelle, anyone on Zoom?
Michelle Lee, you are unmuted and recognized.
Go ahead, Michelle. Good evening. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
Good, go ahead.
My name is Max Lee. And I live at forty seven Rowland Road and I go to Henley School. And I'm in first grade. And it's not right to tell people just because they're different. And here's a real life true story that I'll never forget. So two people did this to me. Chinese eyes and it hurt my feelings because it feel they made me feel like I didn't belong. And Darian should support D D E I to help to help kids learn that it's wrong to make kids feel bad just because of their race. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much for speaking this evening. Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom, Michelle?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Sure, come on up.
Hi, I'm Armel Jacobs, twelve fifth. Happy New Year, everyone. Just a real quick word to incorporate and I want to say that I fully agree and have experienced all of the things that Diane was reporting. The people here who I think some of you have asked us to show up for this stuff, we're burning out real hard. And honestly, it feels like that's the strategy. And I'm sorry, I'm like all choked up because like Max is just such a sweetheart and my kid has been in his class for the last two years and she has experienced similar things. Her skin is white, but mine isn't. And when I go in there, it's painfully obvious and the kids have lots of questions and the teachers need to be empowered to deal with those situations. So, you know, we need help from the top. We need help from you guys. So that you can empower the teachers to deal with those scenarios so that kids like my kid, kids like Max and even all of the like white kids in this district that have these questions. They need some guidance here. So I hope you hear that call. That's all I'm here to say. Thanks.
Thank you for speaking this evening. Move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. And as the board chair said, thank you for everybody's contributions to the Saturday Budget Workshop. I know our students will talk about the exams. I just want to wish them well. It's the high school exam schedule this week. I won't say any more than that. I'm sure they can they can give the update regarding budget questions. Thank you to C D S P, C P A C and the various R T Ms that contributed to the questions. Tonight, we'll go through the Board of Education Q and As and the responses. Excuse me. And by Friday, we will have distributed to C D S P, C P A C and Board of Finance and the R T Ms, the responses to their questions. So next week comes pretty thick and fast Tuesday night because Monday is a holiday. So they will have those responses by Friday. We've been feverishly working on them and I think we'll be good to go by this Friday. So we'll forward to those to the respective parties on the board as well in time for the Tuesday meeting. I do want to recognize it was a bit just before the holiday and it went to the Curriculum Committee, but I just want to share it in front of the full board. The I Create two thousand and twenty two as a regional high school art exhibition and competition. And I just want to recognize Charlotte Co- Current, who's I believe is a senior for her escaping the pandemic. Painting, which is absolutely phenomenal. That placed first place. Second place was Thomas Clearly. And that was Solus, which is another unbelievable piece of artwork. And Sarah Jackson painting was selected as part of the twenty 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 two National Winners Exhibition at the U S Congress Hall of Representatives in Washington in D C. So I just want to congratulate those particular students, Jacqueline and the staff for all they do in the area of the arts. Congratulations. Today, we launched the social emotional learning portal. So if you haven't seen it and you have your phone on you, you can certainly go to that right now if you would like to do that. I think it's under District Information. And that was presented today to our Curriculum Committee. And it's available for our members of our community to peruse. Friday is a professional development day across the district where we focus on K to two reading and elementary mathematics. Connecticut says middle school will be doing excuse me, anti defamation league training with the staff. Some S back work and departmental work of high school will be focusing on departmental units of work and assessments, P L C work and some legal updates. We're pleased that Leon Karlo Kowski, that's our Director of Security, joined us yesterday. So Leon started and we look forward to planning informational sessions for our parents at each of the schools and we'll communicate those accordingly. Thank you to the members of the robotics team on Saturday. As the January seventh, the first robotics team traveled to Wilted to get the first robotics competition kickoff. Students have six weeks to build the robot in this competition, which is a worldwide competition. I just mentioned to the board that there is a cave area legislative breakfast that's for region six, which is our region here. It's on Jan- January nineteenth, Thursday. There are a variety of meetings on that day, so it'll be difficult to attend. If anybody is free and would like to attend, let me know. I'll certainly sign you up. There are a couple of upcoming meetings, the Board of Ed Special Meeting, which is next Tuesday, January twenty fourth. The Communications Committee, as a reminder, has been canceled. Finance Committee and Facilities currently scheduled for January nineteenth. One will start at eight thirty and one will start at nine and Policy Committee on Friday, January twentieth. And finally, schools close on Monday, January eighteenth in honor and recognition of the contributions of Dr. King.
Thank you, Dr. King. Move on to the student representatives reports. John Raskoff and Swaha Chuck Robardi. Are you studying for exams while you're
Yep.
here?
Good evening, everyone. So as everyone has mentioned, this week and next week are exam week at D H S. So one of the major successes actually was last Thursday, the Darian chapter of the National Honor Society and the Blue Wave anchors at Darian co-sponsored the cocoa and cram session for all of the freshmen to study. That was last Thursday, January fifth. We had more than twice the number of students attending compared to last time, which was before COVID. So that represents an increase in interest, not just rebounding from COVID, which is cool. And then the midterm schedule itself midterm started today and will continue until next Thursday.
Thank you, John.
Also, the Scholastic Art Awards, which is separate to what Dr. Adley mentioned.
Swaha, just bring that microphone as close to you as possible. Thank you.
The Connecticut Regional Awards came out yesterday on the ninth and several students from Darian High School got accepted works that will be showcased in Hartford. And also the Darian High School Student Government is hosting a snowball dance for all grades on the twenty seventh, and it features a special performance by the winners of the Battle of the Bands. So.
Great. Thank you. I wish you and all your other students and friends good luck on your exams. We'll move on to approval of minutes. We have a motion to approve the following minutes of the special meeting held on December thirteenth, twenty twenty two, minutes of the regular meeting held on December thirteenth, twenty twenty two, and minutes of the special meeting held on December thirteenth, twenty twenty two. Julie Best second by eight. Anyways, in favor? Unanimous with everyone here. Thank you. Move on to Board Committee Reports. Julie, Sarah.
And so the Curriculum Committee met this morning and we're going to bookend our days in this, our day in this room. We talked about math acceleration, which was a topic that will come to the full board. Maybe the twenty fourth, maybe after that. And then we also touched on, we talked about the S E L curriculum and got an update what's going on there. There's a lot of really good work that's been done both around the math acceleration process and ideas as well as S E L. So I encourage you all to watch them.
Good. Thank you, Sarah.
The other Board Committee Reports.
Okay, good. Thank you. We'll move on to presentations and discussions. Think the topic of one of the big topics of this evening, presentation and discussion and possible action on Henley Homes and Royal Design Development Documents and estimates. Got our friends here from K G and D and I'll turn it over to Jill McCann.
Julie, you turned me off this morning. You turned this off this morning. Thank you very much. Travis is here. He's going to focus on the, really the differences between what we saw in the conceptual design presentation not that long ago and what we have for you tonight, just so you understand what's changing. We are looking for an approval by the end of the evening. We also have Chris Price, my co-chair and Eric Keier, Eric's co-person over at P N Z tonight, talking particularly about drainage at Henley and Homes, but talking more broadly. So we're double teaming and thank you to Dave Martin for being in this room with us here at B O E. So I'll turn it over to Travis. He's going to go pretty fast through the presentation, understanding that we do have a big meeting tonight.
Yep. You've heard a lot of this. My goal's twenty minutes. Joe Canis is also with P N Z. So I'll try to handle any technical stormwater questions, but we should just be.
I think you're better off here, Travis.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think Eric and I fought for this one.
Just for the board's references, there's a slight tweak to one of these slides from what you got. So we'll post this one after the meeting.
Yeah, I think we just updated a rendering for two. Yep. Okay, so yep. Good evening. Happy New Year. Travis Chanel with K G and the Architects. And as Jill stated, the goal of this is really to focus on the differences between the schematic drawings and these D D documents, design development documents. And so, yes, we're looking for approval to move forward with construction documents, which the team is already engaged in. We do have a permit submission beginning of February. So. So a brief rundown of tonight, we're going to look at the exterior designs that changed between S D and D D. We're going to have a quick stormwater discussion and update in the changes there that they're currently presenting over at P N Z. We're going to look at interior design. This includes mostly updated renderings. And we had a follow, we did have a follow up meeting earlier today with faculty. So some of those will be revised further and then we'll touch base on the budget and review the next steps. So jump into exterior. At Henley, there were a few changes based on the recommendations by the district's traffic consultant. The first one over here at Post Road, the curb cut going on the Post Road, that is going to change to an exit only, a right turn exit only. That was also after preliminary discussions with the state and there will also be an island in the center there. Oops. That's to further encourage people not to make left turns. The other revision is the extended bus loop driveway. It's still a larger bus loop, but it's extended further to the south. The whole bus loop has shifted to the south and that is to maintain a parent entry and exit point, also per the recommendation of the traffic consultant. And travel in and out of that would be limited during dismissal and arrival. The other items we looked at were the main entrance and the student entrance off of the bus loop. And some of these were per some initial A R B comments and discussion with the Building Committee and the District. Generally speaking, at the main entrance, there's only minor enhancements here that include landscaping and sidewalk upgrades. Some more shrubs and trees, but generally not much going on here.
And also you're changing the paving.
Yeah, exactly. This, here you go. There is going to be an insert of pavers in the center and you will get a refresh of the sidewalks and the landscape.
So it might not, uncertain things, I think, if anyone wants to jump in. So it might not just be in this picture, but at Ox Ridge, we spent a lot of time and we've spent a lot of time around security. So any ballasts or bumpers or whatever across here, since this is there's kids walking here. And so I think it's something.
Something we should look at. We haven't discussed that.
Drop offs and pickups that we have, whatever you want to call them, ballasts, bumpers, rocks.
Yeah, bollards.
Bollards. Thank you. Thank you. Yep.
Ballers along the.
I think Ox Ridge would be a good example to look at in terms of how we did it.
Yeah, right at the front.
And exits and where the buses are too.
At the bus drop off. We are proceeding with the original proposed plaza design that you see over here on the right. The left shows an alternative option that we looked at after some A R B comments, but upon further conversations with the administration and with the Building Committee, the preference really is for the original design shown on the right, which does have a larger plaza entrance. This was kind of a less formal toned down approach and everyone wants to proceed with just this approach here on the right.
Part of the, part of the feedback was that, you know, this is very grand and the other entrance on the other side is not quite as grand. You know, one of the things that we're finding as a committee is we have a specific scope. So we weren't scoped to renovate the entire building. We were scoped to renovate components of it. This entry, because the library was on it, is part of our scope. We did talk about the difference, you know, maybe trying to downscale as you see on the left.
Right.
To make the two entrances more in line per some comments from A R B. But in discussions with administration and open vista and better traffic patterns for students and staff was strongly preferred. So we are going to stay with our original design of the one on the right.
Right. But you're not changing the entrance to the school.
We are not changing.
No, the main entrance stays as the previous slide showed. This is just for the student arrival and dismissal from the buses.
But that is part of why we took another look at the landscaping in the front of Henley to try and build the.
Spruce it up. Yep. Spruce it up and still keep that as the, you know, the overall main entrance. But this is handling a large volume of students coming up. So we thought it was warranted to have that larger plaza. Because what happens with the smaller pathways and indirect pathways, they find their way to the front entrance and they end up really eroding the grass anyway. So we thought it was still worthwhile to have that larger plaza there.
It's also about our scenario for safety and security and supervision.
And moving on to homes over here, this, this shows the, the original Curtis property development that we had proposed in the schematic plan that was greatly reduced after we were listening to neighbor input. The original plan had a larger parking lot over here extension. And it had an above ground stormwater basin. And this is the access drive. So after receiving the feedback from the neighbors, we went back to the drawing board on that. And there's been a lot of back and forth with our engineer and P N Z and the town engineers. And this is currently the revised plan. It eliminates the additional parking lot at the Curtis parcel. So there is no additional spaces there. In lieu of that, we have just increased a couple of several parking spaces that are less impactful and that they're extensions off of your already paved areas. Additionally, we shifted the above ground basins to a below ground infiltration system that's on the fields. That made a couple of movements. One was located over here. That was going to kind of be in the way of construction work. So we further moved it into the field. This was also a preference by both the neighbors and by the district. It is at the end of the day, easier to maintain and has less of a potential to become in an eyesore. Because it's all, all below the surface.
We also found that for the safety of the campus, in the original location was very close to the building. We decided not to put a pond that close to the building. And then as we know that you can use almost no pesticides appropriately on school campuses. So there was some discussion particularly over a pond located that closely to the school population. So it's been moved to the back and put underground.
Yep.
Again, for a variety of reasons, including maintenance, safety.
That's right.
And then I think later in the presentation, you'll walk through the efficacy.
Yep. And additionally here, you know, it's just the overall goal was less disturbance in the wooded area. And then moving on to the main entrance. This is the existing entrance and we have, what you'll see on the next slide, there's a new main entrance coming out of the corner to give it more prominence and a connecting corridor over to the new music edition. See here. And this is the current design. This changed from the original designs, more contemporary flat roof and butterfly structure that was presented during S D. It's now a more traditional pitch group design that we think and the board and the Building Committee and Administration agrees with, that fits better into the character of the campus and the neighborhood. And this was also in response to some A R B comments. You'll see that the entrance is more prominent right now. You know, on the older design, it was kind of tucked into the corner and wasn't very clear. And here it comes out a little further. You'll see a little better down here. And it's just a more prominent feature. So we think this will work well. And the roof will be a synthetic slate to better match with the existing Holmes building. And this is an overall aerial. And again, you can see the entrance coming out and this entrance upgrade is kind of part of the security upgrade and part of enhancing the flow as you enter the building. This just shows some general landscape updates, again, plantings along the perimeter, some trees and updated new sidewalk as needed, again, with an insert, paver insert at the point of entrance. And we will look at definitely putting bollards along, along. And so, you know, there are follow up A R B meetings where we'll be showing them these as well. We'll also be looking to downplay this old entrance here and playing with either paint colors likely to just downplay that as an entrance. So it competes less with the new, the new entrance. And next up is Royal. There really weren't major changes since schematic design to the site here. So this is just for reference. Showing you where, reminding you where the two additions are and the library bump out addition and the new courtyard. One item that we are continuing to look at is possible enhancements to the main entrance to give that a greater presence that was beyond the scope of the ed specs, but based on some A R B comments. We're going to look at some options and review that with the Building Committee and we will get back to you with updates.
I might say that a little bit differently. You'll forgive me. If there is time and money remaining as the project progresses, that's an area where we might look at being able to do some enhancements.
Yeah, that's correct. To clarify, we are still looking at a design for that. But to proceed with that design, it would have to be within the budget and timeframe.
Later in the process, it won't be a part of our initial construction design or our initial bid.
Or A R B can write a check for it.
Right. I didn't say that. And this is just a reference to remind you of the exterior rendering of the field side. Again, no major updates, just further refinement, working with the landscape architect on the courtyard.
So originally in this view, if you go into the center courtyard and you go to that bump out where you've got expansion for Learning Commons, a new courtyard. One of the views I saw way back when were bump outs across the building. We've got issues with classroom size up there. So how is that being addressed? We'll see that in the internal schematics or?
Well, yes, we widened the rooms. So we've shifted some interior walls. You know, we've used the new additions to kind of move program into there to right size those. And then, yes, there's some internal shifts of spaces to, to make that work.
So yeah, a lot of those were on where that library is now coming out. It's actually, a lot of those were undersized classrooms that we're now using, as we just said.
Right.
And then we have renovations in other spots.
Okay, moving on to a little more detail into the stormwater. Most of that we've touched on. At Henley, we updated this stormwater. After, again, hearing responses from the neighbor, we want neighbors, we did want to reduce peak flow that was occurring towards the south and try to get the system to drain towards near water, which the original proposal was not doing. The original proposal also had an above ground detention basin. So after looking at that further and taking into the, the recommendations and the preferences by the administration and Building Committee, we are now locating these basins also underground to match what we're doing at the other campuses. So now all stormwater is underground detention basins. And we were able to, you know, get the pitches we need to get it over to near water. This has been reviewed with the town. It is also their preference. The majority is going to near water. A second basin was added to just help reduce the flow to near water. But there is also additional, some additional split flow here that still goes over to the wetlands, to the south. And that was a request specifically by D P W. That you need to keep the wetlands kind of charged with runoff. And that was the major change at Henley. I think there's been some tweaks in this further and those are being in more detail that we don't have to go into. That's at the other meeting this evening. And homes. Again, this just reiterates that this was shifted. This is, plan is rotated. Curtis property was up here. So that above ground basin has now been shifted to the underground infiltration tanks below the field. Additionally, after hearing comments from neighbors over on the west side, we, there is an existing structure here that tends to clog and overflow. So we are adding a curtain drain along the length of that property line and replacing the structure to be a little more robust with a double grate system. So it'll reduce the chances of clogging. And it'll just increase the overall area. And it'll just increase the overall area that surface water can be gathered and then taken by the system.
If you're asked about drainage when you're out, you know, having your Thursday evening cocktail, um, you can say, we had to do drainage because we increased the sizes of campuses so that, you know, that queued us up for a code. To be code, we had to increase our drainage, but we have used a hundred year standard. The town standard is a 50 year standard. So we're pretty comfortable that we have done our utmost uh, to really accommodate, you know, as best we can. The needs of a, being a watershed community.
And actually, th- these designs are above and beyond the town requirements. These are, uh, one, uh, yeah, designed for 100 year storms. All right, next we're going to jump into some of the, the renderings that we're working on. Again, some of these will be, uh, you know, further refined after comments we received today by faculty. And just in general with the interior design, you know, all these layouts were based on meetings that we had with faculty user groups. So we take their input, we go back and forth with that and we show them the plans and we keep refining. Um, we wanted to make sure there was consistency in design between the three schools. But, you know, we're also looking to add specific moments that, you know, bring out the specific character of each school. And we do always want to keep in mind the layout and the materials just need to contribute to the overall goals of creating inspiring places to learn. We utilize color and we want warmth and playful materials in order to do that. And we're always considering the long-term use and sustainability along with ease of maintenance for your facilities to be able to maintain the buildings. Um, and a lot of these will be shared materials across the three buildings. So it just makes again, maintenance easier, attic stock easier to, to make any fixes later down the road. Um, and finally, you know, the goal is to keep spaces as flexible as possible. So we utilize furniture, um, versus permanent built-ins in order to achieve that. Okay. So just in general, you'll, the slides you're going to see now are that the classrooms, the music rooms and the art rooms are all fairly similar. Both in layout and in materials. Um, so the next are just the kind of a typical layout. They don't show specifically ones of each school, but they give you a flavor of what the team is working on. And then we'll go through, uh, the learning common spaces, which are a little more unique in their layout. Um, this is a typical classroom showing the teacher wall here. I should say a typical new classroom. This shows the teacher wall here with the whiteboard and the smartboard. It also shows in the previous exterior renderings, you noticed there were some of those bump out bay windows. So that is what this nook is surrounded in wood trim. The ceilings will be acoustic ceiling tile with indirect, direct LED linear lighting. High efficiency. The flooring will be a luxury vinyl tile, which is a more durable, um, updated version of vinyl tiles. And there will be some cubby millwork along the wall. Uh, behind us, do I have a view? Yep. Looking the other way. You have built-in casework with a sink in every classroom. And there'll be opportunities for accent walls, uh, painted accent walls. The furniture you see here is just a placeholder for reference to get a sense of scale and layout. We do still have to go through all the furniture with the district. Over here is a typical, uh, music room. Notice that in the music rooms and the libraries, they do have larger expanses of window to bring in natural light. They are generally larger spaces with larger program functions. You have a pitched ceiling here to kind of open up that space and give you more light. The ceiling here is a wood look, a metal wood look acoustic ceiling. Again, with the same linear direct and direct lights, there'll be some acoustic treatment on the wall. The space, the storage space is per the district's record, per faculty's requirements. The house of different instruments and generally the center is going to be kept open for both rehearsals and behind us here is where they gather in the beginning of the day and there'll be a sink and casework on the other wall. And over here again, you have the teaching wall with the view sonic board and the whiteboard. And of course the boomwhackers over on the corner. And this is a typical art room. Again, the high windows brings a lot of natural light into those art rooms. The back wall would be an accent wall. Here we show acoustical ceiling tiles in lieu of the metal ceiling tiles. We wanted to show both option as the metal wood look ceiling tiles are, um, good chunk more money. So this is a good area to save some money and go with the, the white acoustic ceiling tiles, which sounds like the direction will likely be header, heading to better spend that money elsewhere. That's more needed. Um, again, this layout and storage needs are based on feedback from faculty. There's the built-in casework in the back with a, uh, with a hand sink and then a double larger kind of slop sink for the artwork.
And this would be either Hindley or Royal.
That's right. Um, and behind us that you don't see is a kind of where the kids come in, the gathering space and the teaching wall. So nothing has changed, uh, in these plans, but we just have the plans here, um, for reference in case there are any questions. Jumping into the learning commons at Hindley first, this is the new learning commons. Again, the fields are up in this direction here. So this is your window wall here and this is your bump out there. And you're, and you're entering the space off of the new corridor. And the upper floor for reference, you'll see all those rooms in purple. They have some instances where you are where some of these walls are shifting to create right-size classroom conditions. A little dark here, but this is the interior view of the Hindley library. This, we would like to keep the acoustic wood look metal ceiling, since this is a more prominent, uh, space being the, the learning commons. And again, this is the large window wall with the wide views out and to the playing fields and you get a lot of natural light in there. To the left, uh, this is the bump out kind of reading nook where you see some tiered seating there. And it looks a little dark. That's because it's an angle where you're seeing the, uh, the vertical fins that help with, uh, solar control shading. And this is the entry desk. Again, we will have carpet in these spaces, the painted walls and a lot of movable furniture, all per faculty librarian, uh, direction. And the libraries in general are kind of focused on these learning, different learning and age group zones. And that's how the spaces are laid out. You can see there's, in this version, there's a classroom nook over here with a teaching wall. And behind us, there is a, um, yep, behind us, there's a little maker zone that kids can do some more like robotics and Lego work. This will include casework, storage and a sink in each school. And then the door back here is access to the green room that each school will also have for recording sessions. Okay, next up is Holmes. Again, no real changes to the plan. To remind everyone, the learning common stays in its current location. Um, we do change the entrance location, so it's more direct and prominent off of the main lobby. And we do make a bump out, uh, extension into the new courtyard. And make a new exit from the library to the exterior.
Was there a decision there to put a basement in there in that back part of that building?
Yes, that houses mechanical equipment and also functions as much needed storage space. Same thing with below the music wing. And that keeps, that helps to minimize the, uh, the HVAC equipment that goes on the roof. So this is the interior view of the Holmes learning commons. These views are go, these are the views through the new addition bump out that go out to the new courtyard space. So right now, these are large window openings in the current library. So they would be modified to become these openings into that space and we would reinstall clear story windows up top. Yeah.
If I remember, there was a temporary room that was sort of built inside the library and a bunch of conduit. That all goes way out. Awesome.
Yeah, there, that existing, yeah, room is kind of off on the side. So we're opening up. We're opening up this whole main space and instead we're putting the smaller rooms here in the back corner. And we will build out an unfinished space up above. So you don't have an awkward condition like you have now where you have these office spaces, but it's in a double height space and you just end up with a dust collector and a wasted space on the ceiling. Yep. And yes.
There, there's no longer an entrance up that hallway. Cause I'm looking at the previous plan, there, there used to be a door going into that. So that's been moved in the new version.
As of now, that's been removed because we do have two ways out. One is through here to, to the lobby and it's a more prominent entrance. Cause right now it is a secure this route that you gotta go around and then find the entrance. So it's more prominent than you enter right into the main space. And then there's a second way out to courtyard. But we will be reviewing this with the district's security team and seeing if another exit is needed back here. Right now, these three spaces, um, include the librarian work zone, storage room and the green room. Which this is all happening off screen, kind of to the left of us in this view.
Was it, whatever happened, wasn't there a question with the gym and the foundation and all that? How, how do we make out with that?
So we are, this wall, this will be a double wall. We're building a new wall in front of that and packing it with acoustic material. That'll keep the direct sound at bay. Um, and we are still working with an acquisition now to deal with whether or not we have to make a cut in the slab to prevent the vibrations from carrying through from the gym. It's a, it's a little more complicated than just cutting the slab because there are some structural concerns there. You can't completely cut the slab and have it separated from the existing footing that's likely there. So we need to look at it a little further, but we heard it loud and clear today while we were meeting for three hours in this room with faculty as kids were playing in, in the gym. So, yes.
Similarly, uh, at Hindley, just not to go back for a second, there is a, uh, the instrumental music is right next to the art room. Are similar considerations being made to, so for example, in bands versing.
Yes. So, and then I'll touch on it later with the estimate, but yes, we have specific acoustic control walls that kind of wrap the, um, perimeter of the music rooms. Um, not, uh, and between the music rooms, not to the corridor, um, because that's less important, but yes, to other program spaces. Um, so finishing this off. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna redo kind of the trim, but we want to keep the look similar here. So this is gonna be new, uh, wood trim to kind of match the existing. And we're gonna, we're gonna keep these wrapped beams that are currently existing. These are actually part of the truss roof system. You'll have an opportunity for a teaching wall over here with a small breakout classroom space. And then we will likely line these upper panels with acoustic treatment. And again, similar carpet that you'll see in the other buildings, uh, that also helps with acoustics. And then that addition helps with some of the breakout zones for the different age, reading age groups. And then rolling on into Royal. So the Royal Library, um, this is the existing that was here that's been removed. So if you recall, we are taking over this whole side of the hallway. And we do have another bump out here in the blue. That's the new portion of it that does extend into, um, the outdoor courtyard. And in this setup, you do, it, while it is a, an odd setup, it's a little more tricky. The benefits are that you do get kind of more separated zones for the, uh, the, the louder activities. So from your classroom to your maker space, and that allows for more of a centralized, um, reading and larger group space. So this is walking into the doors from, um, the hallway into the Royal Learning Commons. You'll see this view out is into the new courtyard. And so that's that bump out extension where there will be several different zones for the different age groups, uh, book collections. Um, and we're still, this is just an example of furniture options that you can have fun, kind of furniture elements in the space. Um, as the mechanical equipment and existing conditions allow, we are going to try to maximize areas that we can enlarge the ceiling space to increase the volume there. You'll see some acoustic treatments on the walls that we are still working on the details. And again, some carpet throughout in the background there, you'll see, uh, a movable wall to separate the breakout classroom function. And this is just the closer up view of that classroom space within the library. These walls can slide open and allow for a larger space when you have larger functions in there. Okay. Um, so these are just a series of scope summary slides. A lot of stuff that we've already reviewed. It's just for your reference. We don't need to go into the details here. Keep it moving. We do have this for, if anyone wants to go back and just reexamine the work that's being done. And now we can get, yes.
So in, um, Royal, the transition on the first floor where we had the steps by the cafeteria existing, how was that resolved to level it or ramps or?
That is remaining as, are you talking about here?
Yeah, exactly.
There's no change to that condition.
It'll remain as stairs?
Hmm.
It'll remain as stairs?
It'll remain as stairs, yes.
Okay.
I think we were unable to adjust it.
I thought it was discussion of a ramp at one point or, yeah.
Yeah, but I think the pitch.
It would have to be a significant ramp that, and you can't have doors from classrooms opening onto the ramp. So it's, that's a really tough condition. And, you know, to be frank, it was outside of the ed specs and, and not worth that, that effort at this time. Cause you would, you would lose access to rooms and it would be tricky to get into your main spaces there with the length of that ramp.
Thank you.
Yep.
At, at homeschool, the service track that's there, would there be? Yeah, like the high school all under the bridge of that falls again.
Bollards.
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 Bollards. Will there be bollards there or?
I think so. I think the takeaway from this evening will be to go look at.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Out of all the things I thought we discussed tonight, bollards was not one of them, but.
We're in the security frame of.
Yeah. Oh, you're talking about the, that access drive that goes around back for the deliveries and garbage?
The issue there is they haven't figured out at the high school too, it's the same thing that who has the key? You have to make sure the fire department has the key. Those things, that's more for fire access. Yeah.
Not knowing where they're going.
Agreed. Yep.
I mean, our expectations is that would be chained off during normal operating hours. And that facilities would have to control when that's opening and, and limit deliveries at certain times. Yep.
Before we go into the budget discussion, can I ask like, in these kind of questions? Um, the furniture in the old classrooms that is currently there, is that staying? That's not part of the budget to replace that furniture, right? The new furniture is only going in the new classrooms.
Correct. Only furniture in the new spaces.
Okay. Um, the Holmes taking away the parking lot on the Curtis property and putting in those two other, you know, smaller satellite parking. Is that, does that give us the same amount of spaces that would have been on the Curtis property?
Yes, if we were still at that, like, uh, 95 was our target. Um, I'd have to confirm that, but I think we are in that 90 to 95.
I think it's about 92.
Yeah.
In this model. So it's a couple less, but okay. Um,
staying on Holmes, that, so Royal and Hindley have a maker space. It looks like Holmes does not. Is there a way to, or is there a maker space incorporated in the?
Holmes has a maker space. It's in the corner, kind of where the, uh, in the back corner, we just didn't have a rendering of it yet.
I just wanted to make sure that they were all having.
But all the libraries have similar program by design.
Okay. Um, I also was curious what the teachers and faculty said today. Like, was there a general theme of when they saw this?
Oh, they, they are very pleased with the progress of the work and we love their feedback because it really just makes our job a lot easier. So.
I wish my kids were still at Holmes. This is.
All right. Want to move on to the numbers?
Sure. Okay. So just like we did at the end of SD, we had the same two estimators. One was our independent, uh, NASCO Construction Services and the other was ONG APC. Um, so this table shows the comparison between the two teams and really how generally they were, um, in alignment with each other and close to the budget. So the good news there is that it confirms that both estimators were interpreting the documents in the same way and they're coming in very close to each other. So a brief summary there, overall Hindley is slightly under budget between 600,000 and 1.4 million, depending on which estimate you're looking at. Holmes, uh, was a little over budget. That's 1.8 to 2 million over. Royal is between seven hundred thousand and one point four million under, so as a combined total, the takeaway is that, you know, the, the project's in a good place with where we are with this design and design development.
Generally, when you're. Once you add the ballards.
Right, well. Platinum ballards, yeah, would drive up the cost. Well, that, you know, they do make ones that electronically receive, you'll see at the courthouses.
We've looked at them all.
And just to explain this a little further, specifically takeaways on why Holmes was a little over budget. So the music addition along with that connecting corridor and entry were kind of added to the project's scope, but that was in order to realize the true goals of the ed specs and where they best fit within the program of the school, when you factor into right size and classrooms and providing appropriate adjacencies. Ideally, you do not want music rooms, you know, right next to classrooms, so it's good to have them off to the side there. And the main entrance did need to be more prominent, and it does create just a more efficient and secure entry point into the school. Holmes also started as the lowest budget, so this is really just bringing it into alignment with the other buildings. And there was some additional cost to site work in response to neighbor comments, because moving all those basins to underground was more money than the above ground systems. And to keep in mind, the project during DD is holding contingency monies, so design contingency with all the projects combined is still three million dollars, that slowly is drawn down as we progress with the work. So I think right now that was five percent, and as we move into CDs, that number will go down to zero and be absorbed into the projects. So right now, that's like about a million dollars that would get absorbed into the Holmes overage. There's currently an allowance for abatement, that's two million dollars. And that's not based on an actual report yet, because we're still expecting that in the middle of January, and that'll give us a more refined picture of what those costs are. So there, there's a good chance that number comes down a little bit. And then there's always escalation built in to these projects at an eight percent per year rate. So I think this last one, we're getting closer to the actual construction start, so it's between the four and five percent that was being carried. And then the owner, you guys are carrying still three million dollars contingency on top of that. We do, we are carrying some alternates that if everything comes in well, that we can go with. The cafeterias at Hindley and Royal will receive new acoustic ceilings and lighting.
Need to explain what an alternate is, please, before you say they will receive, just, just so that we don't have people walk out, please, yeah.
Yes, we carry these through the project, so they're kind of submitted with state, they go out to bid with the contractors, and they give us a separate, broken out price for those items, so we can easily see what those numbers are in relationship to the bottom line number for the main project. And if the main project comes in under budget, we can simply award those alternates as we see fit to the project. And we can pick and choose which ones would go into the project while maintaining the budget. And so that lists the alternates, you have the cafeterias, that's a two hundred seventy-five thousand dollar ad. I think Holmes is getting the upgrade anyway, because it needs to based on the MEP work that's going on there. We have a green roof at Hindley over the flat roof portion of the new addition, that's a two hundred fifty thousand dollar ad. Those wood look metal ceilings that we currently had priced in the art rooms and the music rooms, there would be a two hundred fifty thousand dollar savings if we went to ACT, which is likely what we're going to show as the base, baseline approach. And then the front entrances are kind of TBD depending on what we see at Royal and Hindley.
Sorry.
Dennis.
The Royal I understood, because you mentioned at the Hindley, I thought, well, if I remember, I don't, A, I don't know what the front entrance of Hindley you're referring to, because I thought the front entrance was widened to allow better.
It is, it's not.
Access, or is that the, is it the other entrance?
It's the other entrance going. I don't know if we should keep.
Current main entrance.
Current main entrance.
Curbing and the landscaping.
Yeah, going beyond that kind of general enhancement with the landscaping and the.
We are going to do.
Upgrades to the main.
We are going to do the curbing and the landscaping.
Yes.
Just beyond that?
This would be something beyond that.
Okay.
Again, sort of a response to some of the feedback, but it's fourth on the list.
Right. And while the top three will likely be included in, in, as alternates in the document, that last one's kind of an up in the air one, depending on where we land with that, likely will not be an alternate.
No, we won't have it designed.
Yep. And then just.
I think you have your priorities right, I'm not, I could, I mean, we went through the whole wood look metal ceilings at Ox Ridge. You know, I think the cafeterias where kids spend time, that should be a priority in terms of lighting, bright, airy.
Agree.
If the front entrances make sense, and there's some, I don't know if there's anything from a security standpoint that you've talked through there, but I, I would focus on the cafeterias and the, the front entrances of that.
I would agree, those wood look metal ceilings are the lowest on that list, and we can even revisit with the building committee if they even need to be listed as an alternate going forward.
Good.
And this key line items here, this is just back and forth items that we looked at as a team on further reducing costs, so after these estimates came back, we went back and tried to identify the unsuitable soils to make sure we're on the same page there, which I think we are, so these numbers reflect the current soil conditions that need to occur.
And unsuitable soils means what, Travis?
Unsuitable soils means like poor, poor backfill that happened on that site. You can't build on top of it, because it's not structurally capable of supporting the new addition. So when you go to excavate for it, you have to excavate down, get it all out of there, and go back with structural film. It's not cheap, but ONG is carrying money to do that based on, this is why we have a geotech report done during the design phase to determine these locations.
It's like the old septic system we found at Ox Ridge.
Yep.
Gonna.
Really have to remediate all that before you can build on top of it.
Yep. All right, what's next?
Yeah, we briefly, we, you know, did make the change, the underground inflation, infiltration system, some of that has to be reflected in the budget. But we're reducing greatly the underpinning adjacent to new basements, so we're able to step that foundation rather than digging underneath the new foundations, and it's a little complicated procedure, you can't undermine the existing foundations when you build a new building right next to it, so we're trying to build the new basements further off, so you don't have to build underneath the new, the existing foundations. So that'll reflect some reductions in the current estimates. Again, just generally trying to maximize the steel, make it the most efficient to keep those costs down. Reducing acoustic partitions between the music rooms to just where they're most impactful between rooms. They're not needed as much from the corridor to the room. And then looking at how we can reduce storefront glass and use cheaper systems in that area. But overall, we think, you know, the estimates really aren't a good place for this level and stage of development, and we recommend proceeding with CDs. Don't forget, you'll have another round of estimates to look at when we're done with CDs. Not done with CDs, but when we get the, kind of an eighty-five percent estimate out at the beginning of February. So just to quickly go through those next steps. Like I said, we have the concurrent P and Z meeting, hopefully that's going well over there. There's going to be a whole lot of series of phasing meetings with ONG to figure out how the interior is being phased, so that's broken out over a series of meetings over the next four to five weeks, as needed. Then we do have a follow-up ARB meeting on the seventeenth. Follow-up Holmes meeting on the twenty-fourth, tonight's just Hindley and Royal. And then our next big target is February third to submit to town for permit and for ONG to do another round of estimate submissions. Town permit gets the ball rolling, we need them to review it before we can go on and continue with the state grant application process. We still need to have our design development review with state, that'll happen mid-February. Then in late March, we will have a pre-conformance review with the state, that's when they review the documents and say that they're good to go for bid. And end of April is our anticipated bid date. And that's, that's a.
Thank you, Travis.
Free rundown, yeah.
Great. Any more questions, comments? Confident with David Martin working on the numbers, we'll get there, and the precedent's been set, Public Works under budget, Ox Ridge under budget. No pressure. Thank you for all your work, David. To the whole committee, Jill, Chris, thank you for the hours and days having been there with Ox Ridge, it was literally almost every day, something going on with HHR, so into the principals, the administration, Kevin, Alan Rich, I know that you're involved in all this too, so thank you, this is just a yeoman's effort to renovate three schools and we're still finishing the building of Ox Ridge, so thank you all, and Travis, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Great, thank you very much. I got the agenda in front of me. Everyone's trying to move everything along. All right, we'll move to, may I have a motion to approve the Hindley Homes and Royal Design Development documents and estimates as presented this evening? Dennis seconds, Julie, Dennis motion, Julie second, all those in favor? It's good unanimous as we move forward, thank you, thank you, Jill, nice presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
We'll move on to a curriculum update, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four curriculum priorities, Dr. Tranberg.
Great, good evening, everyone. Now for the teaching and learning that will fill these beautiful new spaces.
Yeah.
So the presentation this evening is really broken down into three chunks. First, on our guiding documents, some specific content that we're looking at for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and our goals to continue to enhance communication regarding curriculum and instruction across the district. As always, we're making connections to the mission and vision as we're developing our plans, and I think we've learned tonight about whether it's science of reading, math acceleration, integration of ASL, expansion of Mandarin, we're really looking at preparing our students for all the exciting things that they have in their future. One of the important guiding documents, and you've seen this graphic before, these are the three things that we really go to, to anchor our work with curriculum and instruction, those are the standards and frameworks, so all content areas, all grade levels. Curriculum is based on standards and frameworks that are usually federal, they're federal standards, and then the state has standards that they've adopted that are identical or pretty similar, and then we use those to develop our curriculum. We have our vision of the graduate, and of course, we have our strategic plan. The vision of the graduate, those competencies of integrity, communication, creativity, curiosity, empathy, and interdependence are those guiding principles of the vision of the graduate. And if you remember, in the strategic plan, we have all of those competencies that, that fall under those. So what we're working on and the expectation of the ask is when you have a vision of the graduate, they ask the question of, well, what are you doing to measure this? How are you bringing this to life for your students? So since we have the language developed for really sixth through twelfth grade, we're bringing a committee back together. Some members that were on it before and some new members to really work on, well, what's the parallel language? Because if you look at how it was written for maybe a senior or junior to understand, that's not necessarily the same language that a kindergartner might understand when we're trying to create those guaranteed experiences for them. So that's an immediate next step for us, and then actually integrating them in our curriculum is a really important goal. So for the sixth through twelve, we do have all of the language embedded, so as new units of instruction are being developed, we can make those connections where those competencies are being addressed. This morning, we had a great discussion on mathematics acceleration. So for several years, this has been a request of the community, and most recently, as a result of the gifted education program evaluation that the board heard in June of twenty twenty-one, there was a consideration to look closer at opportunities for math acceleration. So a committee did that for about a year and a half, and there is a three-tiered recommendation that starts with differentiation, which is addressing the teaching and learning with the students in front of you through planning, instruction, and assessment on a regular basis. The idea of compacting, so focusing on those grade level standards within, in mathematics, but giving students an opportunity to go deeper and enrich the learning with the grade level standards, and then the third is acceleration for students who might be ready to move beyond those grade level standards. The example that we all know when it comes to math is when we look at fifth to sixth grade, we have sixth grade math, we have sixth grade advanced math, and then we have sixth grade accelerated math, so that's where acceleration has existed. The plan that we'll talk about in greater detail in an upcoming meeting, because this is, has been such a, a big deal for a while, we'll take a closer look and I'll explain some more of the exciting things behind the math acceleration. The science of reading is also a big focus for curriculum. I'm not sure how close you followed the discussion that's been happening, but there's a lot out there on the science of reading. This comes from the right to read legislation that happened in twenty twenty. And the idea is the state would like to provide some oversight to districts, accountability to districts, and at the same time, support districts. And they did that by establishing a task force, so to speak, at the state level. They have identified programs that they are suggesting that districts use as well as universal screeners, and they're offering to provide supports to help districts make that happen. If districts are not adopting one of the programs that the state is recommending, you have an opportunity to complete a waiver, which we've indicated that we are going to complete a waiver, and the waivers are due next month. And we know that all districts must notify, I believe it's by Friday of this week, the state, whether or not they're completing a waiver, asking for a delay for financial reasons, or if they're adopting one of the programs that the state approved. In the meantime, we have been addressing the science of reading, as you know, where Teachers College has been our, our, our core document. But we've also supplemented that through Hagerty and Foundations, because we share the belief that to fully address the science of reading, the Teachers College units of study are not enough, even though the new units of study, which we purchased, do have a more robust component related to phonics, we are still taking an approach to make sure we are looking at some of those other resources as well. In world language, as you know from some of our recent meetings, what we'll be working on with curriculum this year is developing our, our first American Sign Language course, which hopefully will be the first of the continuum of other courses. Mandarin is a continuation of the sixth grade course, going to seventh for those students, because students, when they choose a language at the middle school, they're really committing to a language for three years. And the third is we have our third grade Spanish, they're working with IXL this year, which is a, a technology to support enrichment that provides some immediate feedback. One of the challenges that happens with world language instruction in general is you learn most when you're engaged in actually speaking the language and interacting, and when you're in a class, you don't always have the opportunity to to talk the entire time, so this gives that opportunity for some students who are ready for a little push with Spanish instruction. For visual and performing arts, we're going to take advantage, so to speak, of our partnership with Tri-State. We are due for a Tri-State visit next year, and we are going to focus our visit on a program evaluation for visual and performing arts. So the guiding question that we've been working on, we're in the process of putting that that team together, the steering committee for that visit, is helping the Darian Public Schools provide access to an innovative arts education that prepares all students today to thrive in a changing world tomorrow. Notice the, the coupling of our vision with what we would like the Tri-State visit to do, and if you haven't seen a Tri-State visit, we would welcome teachers and administrators from a consortium of Tri-State, it's three states, it's New Jersey districts, New York districts, and Connecticut districts, mostly Fairfield County, Westchester County, Bergen County area districts. Send a team, and it's like a mini NEAS visit focused on a problem of practice, rather than being focused on an entire visit on, on how's your school doing. In library and media, exciting to see these, these new spaces, but what we're looking at, especially for K two, because that's where students have guaranteed time in the library for instructional purposes, is developing some curriculum that gives them guaranteed experiences to start to develop those skills and technology early on. The other piece is aligning to the ISTI standards, so ISTI standards are the international technology standards that it hasn't taken solid footing yet, but we keep hearing there's going to be an expectation that all content areas also have to show how technology standards are being supported in those, in those disciplines. So the good news is with our new curriculum platform, we have the space to do that, but there hasn't been any guidance on that yet. Some other big things we are waiting for are the social studies standards update, so I, I know you've heard me say this for, I think, a year. We were supposed to have the new standards a year ago, we just don't have them yet. Once we have those social studies standards, there's really going to be a most pressing need to update social studies at the elementary level. We are still working on our NGSS alignment, because that's a, a big lift. Elementary health education, there was some work done several years ago with the scope and sequence, that work needs to continue as well. The gifted education curriculum is another recommendation that came from our program evaluation in twenty twenty-one, there will be a more full report on gifted education update coming. I think it is in February to the full board. Our teaching and learning principles, which is a recommendation for. Our teaching and learning principles, which is a recommendation for from our strategic plan, it's a year or two, so we want to have those done by the end of this year. And continuing to refine our processes for the curriculum development process and approval process. Regarding communication in general, this is just highlighting, this is all that has happened on the curriculum committee since our first meeting in December of twenty twenty-one. And it also shows what's happening in our February meeting, which there's a gifted education update there. But we have had a chance to walk through almost every content area, and the department chairs presented a program updates, and we're actually starting that cycle again with getting the annual update from them as we move into the spring. So I think those meetings have been productive and for the curriculum nerd in me, enjoyable, because you get to talk about teaching and learning for a solid hour plus. The other piece that we're continuing to refine with communication is our curriculum website. So we've updated that completely. It has things from contact information to who you go to for department information. The actual curriculum is there. Some parent resources and recent presentations are there, and our teaching and learning committees. We've also launched, as Dr. Adley mentioned, this morning, our social emotional learning page of the website, too. So you can access that through district information, and there's information for teachers, there's information for families, there's a general landing page, and that also includes all of the resources that we're using and information about Ruler. We're trying to also increase our transparency by moving all of the curriculum to the Edge of Planet twenty-one platform, which we are in. This is really feels like we've been doing it for a while, but it's really only our first year. This has gone really well so far. I think I presented a four-year plan to you. I think four years is I don't think it's going to take four years at the rate we're moving, so that's exciting. And we'll have a consistent look and approach to all the units of study. So over time, it'll be clear what you're looking at, whether you're looking at a kindergarten unit of study or an AP calculus unit of study. So that's exciting. And I'm glad to answer any questions. That was like the Cliffs Notes of a year in the curriculum.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Board questions, comments?
Katie.
Thank you. Chris, I just wanted to come back to a question that came up Saturday regarding the budget in terms of professional development. In talking about the science of reading and the right to read legislation, one of the ways that we said that we're addressing the science of reading approach is to align our PD to it. So I have to ask the question again about reinvesting in Teachers College. And 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 what other options there might be in terms of other training? You know, in the special education RC, there was a Level One Wilson, and I think we have a very small number of staff members that are trained in that. And I'm wondering if we might not look at having our general education and K through two, K through two teachers have some more training and some of the OG type things. If you can just speak to professional development and science of reading.
So in general, and Shirley, feel free to add to into what I'm saying. There are many trainings for specialized reading programs. That is not how reading instruction is delivered during full group instruction. So while having some trainers could be helpful, yes, I could see that, and I'm certainly not opposed to making sure our teachers are as trained as possible and as skilled as possible in supporting students and the instruction they need. The question that I would ask is if there are concerns regarding the district practices around how we're addressing the science of reading, there doesn't seem to be. I'll phrase it this way. I'll phrase it in the positive. Our students do incredibly well. We have we have strong readers. And when we have students who struggle, we have strong intervention program. We have robust supports through our special education program. So I feel like we are addressing those needs to the programs that we have. The spirit of this legislation comes from addressing disparities that exist in populations that don't, this came up this morning as well, they don't profile like our district does. So to after years of commitment to a program, and it doesn't matter that it's been years, years committed to a program that's been successful, where our students are reading, it doesn't make sense to me to pivot if we feel like we're addressing what might what those gaps might be, what those gaps are that have been identified just because, because it doesn't, how our district is performing isn't matching why the legislation exists.
If I may just add to that, for the direct reading instruction, Katie, to your question, we have worked with general education teachers and trained them also. We have one in the high school, actually, that we trained in Wilson, did a Wilson one level cert also. Could have been two years ago, I'm not quite sure, I lost a year, but recently, within the last two or three years. There was one other one that also we supported in in the elementary levels. Many of the SRBI, SRBI reading specialists are also trained in either OG or Wilson. I don't want to speak without looking at the numbers, Marge, that we have. But there are several who are trained. And again, because it's small group instruction, it's discreet and direct reading instruction, which tends to be delivered in small groups, whether it's in specially designed instruction for children who do have IPs or for children who are given certain levels of either level two or three of SRBI.
Thank you.
I'll add, I'll add one more.
Sarah.
Oh, go ahead. One more thing to add. The, we've also changed our approach with working with our staff developers for the past few years, where we're coming in and they're offering us PD based on exactly what we're asking them for. And we're also giving teachers opportunities to choose areas of focus where they feel like they need additional help and support as well. So right now, our focus is on addressing the science of reading. That's clear. These staff developers who are incredibly talented are very qualified to work on the principles of the science of reading. Without going too deep into everything that's happened with with legislation, the TC units of study were not an approved curriculum because they evaluated the old TC units of study. We have new units of study that do more comprehensively address phonics. So it's been tough because we're trying to stay positive and stay focused on the good work that we're doing and not go into, well, what might have been wrong with all of these processes that happened? And why the legislation exists and how it exists. So we're going to go forward with the waiver, show the good work that we're doing. And there is an adjustment we have to make with an additional universal screener. But other than that, we're feeling pretty confident that we're in a good place. And there are at least fifty percent, if not over sixty percent of the districts that are similarly positioned to where we are.
Thank you, Chris. Sarah.
I'm just going to pick up a little bit more on what you were saying. At one point, you had said that just want to pick on the waiver, because I'm still, I mean, I feel like I'm pretty involved in this situation, and I still am unclear. The waiver doesn't just give a, you know, a freebie year, right? Can you give a little more color around what the waiver actually does for us?
So the waiver gives districts an opportunity to present their program, address a series of questions on how you are addressing the science of reading, how you're measuring it. The waiver also requires that districts provide ample data to show that your students are growing. If the waiver is not approved, then you have to choose one of these other programs. If you choose one of these other programs, it's going to be past our budget timeline to say, we need a new reading program now. So you have an opportunity to apply for a one-year extension before implementation. The programs that we've looked at, we have all of the approved programs, we order them to look at them and review them, and we're looking at a potential cost of five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new reading program.
And if our waiver is approved, what does that do for us? Does that mean that this, we're good item for item, or we will have to revise it? Has the state been clear about that or not?
It's been as clear as there is no direct oversight, but districts can be audited at any time to show how they are fulfilling their obligation. That's how the legislation currently reads. When they approve the waivers, they can certainly do other things, because the state can require things that are not necessarily legislative requirements. But this has been so far unfunded, even though we are hearing that money will be available, but the money that's available will unlikely make it to our district is what it sounds like.
Government, government, it's at its best.
At one point, there was talk, I mean, between Dr. Adley and Dr. Tranberg, that there was like a consortium of Durgay districts that were applying for the waiver. Is it still individual? I mean, it still has to be individual, right? But.
Yes, it has to be individual. We did reach out to our RESC to see if they would provide some support. But they're in a unique position as well, because RESCs are responsible in supporting districts and delivering what the state's asking them to do. So there is, many of us are working together. So even though we have to complete individual waivers, we're talking to each other on a regular basis. That's curriculum leaders across.
The point being, we're not an outlier.
Oh, absolutely not. We're we're actually in the majority. It's so that's the situation now.
Thank you, Chris. Jill.
To talk a little bit more about the visual and performing arts side, about what exactly is happening there. I'm particularly interested in the performing arts side of it. But a vision, a lot of kids self-select into that. And so what I'd love to understand is whether or not we're looking at opportunities for kids who might not naturally self-select or who may not have access under traditional selection criteria to participate in the performing arts. I would be very interested.
Yeah, so we get to design. One of the great things about a Tri-State visit is you design your visit, and you're asking them to look at what opportunities could exist for students that you're not currently seeing. And the visual art and and music have been welcoming and inviting spaces for all students. That's one of the hallmarks of those programs. And knowing who the people are that are directing and coordinating those programs. I know that's an interest of theirs as we go into this visit.
Great.
Thank you. Just to come back to the reading, I wanted to follow up, and I want to be clear that I'm not arguing for against waivers or the state program. That's an enormous conversation that we couldn't even excuse me, we couldn't even begin to to fully get into tonight. I specifically want to talk about the curriculum in Darian and how it works. So I have a couple of follow-up questions. You know, anecdotally, for years, I've been hearing from elementary teachers and administrators that they're unhappy with Teachers College, that it's that it's not enough to provide them with things, same thing for parents. And then I'm curious about how I'm curious about how how we go back and we serve students that are of, let's say, the pre-fundations era, right? You know, our 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 high school students right now, none of them ever received foundations, and even foundations predates Hegarty. And while it's great that we evolve and we learn more, what about the rest of our students? You know, surely in response, like, I appreciate that that we do have professional development and that we do have a couple of people, but you know, I have to say that one person at the high school and one person at another school does not make me feel confident when we have forty-five hundred students. I have I have questions about our writing curriculum. A lot of times we talk about reading and we say our kids can read. I understand that Darian is is incredibly fortunate in the resources it has and that we're a high-performing district. But that doesn't mean that we don't have deficiencies and that we can't do things better. So when we talk about our kids can read, where does the writing fit into that? You know, the writing, I have to say, is another thing anecdotally that I'm hearing quite a bit of in the high school and the middle school and and from parents. You know, just looking over proofreading something and and sort of being appalled at some of the basic sentence structure and grammar rules that aren't being followed and maybe aren't being standardized in a strict manner in terms of capitalization, punctuation, those types of things. So my question to you is, is one, how do we go back to students that might have deficits before curriculum evolves? And two, how does the writing curriculum fall into this?
So one of the budget asks for FY twenty-four are the new units of study for writing, which, similar to reading, it addresses some of the updated research. So that's something that we would look to do. As far as students who might have deficits for any reason, that's why we have intervention processes that exist. So and I'm not just giving a hypothetical, because I don't know for sure, but if a student had a gap as a result of any instruction that they had, the design of the SRB, SRBI processes would catch that. And if that process doesn't fulfill the deficit that they had, then we would keep moving up through our continuum of services to make sure we're providing that support appropriately. The, as far as the mechanics of writing, in my conversations with Mr. Janosco, and I won't speak too much to this without him weighing in, that's something he's always always looking at. So whether it's finding ways to incorporate more vocabulary, and if you look at some of the technology that we're using to do that as well, how do you incorporate grammar? Because English instruction is different than it was. Back when I was in school, we had a grammar book, right? And you had your literature book, and you had your journal, you had all of these different components that are, that that's, it just doesn't look the same right now. But I would want to be specific about what are the actual concerns about what are our students not doing? Because the data that we have have shows our students do incredibly well. So I'm glad to address it, but I would want to make sure I'm looking at data to respond to.
And I would ask Katie, maybe, you know, some good questions there, maybe work with Sarah from a curriculum committee standpoint, maybe some of those things can come up through.
Yes, and we haven't talked about writing very much. We've talked about reading.
Yeah.
In January, I think it's January twenty twenty-one, we did a reading presentation, and then again in December twenty-one.
Good.
Or twenty-two, sorry.
Yeah, my question was going to be around the schedule you have here for the BOM curriculum committee, and I see that last February twenty-second English update was provided. You mentioned we're going to restart the cycle again, so you may address my question, but touches similar to what Katie asked, which is, I don't know if you have it this time, but you know, where do we stand with explicit instruction in English grammar? Sentence structure, graphing sentences, punctuation. I hated that book back when I was in third and fourth grade, but I use it every day. And I, you know, when you know, I have heard from several students going through SATs, ACTs, when they get in the class, when they get in the room, and they're looking colon, semicolon, they have no clue. And they've come up through the Darian system. So it doesn't encourage me that the changes and that it doesn't look the way it did, doesn't convince me that that particular aspect is being done well. It's my understanding that Teachers College feels that that should be explicitly taught. I think that's something we really need to look at, given the experiences we're having here. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. And I'll just, I'll talk to Mr. Janosco when he comes for the next presentation. We'll address that. I do think it's line number one on the RC nineteen textbook request is the new writing style guide. So it's certainly something that we don't.
The style guide's not there if you don't have the foundation, which comes later. And it's.
Good. Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Anything else from the board?
Good. All right. Thank you. We'll move on to an update on implementation of the district's strategic plan, board goals, and diversity, equity, inclusion. Dr. Adley and Dr. Tranberg.
So I will, excuse me, just hit the highlights of this, certainly, and then open it up for questions. The structure around the board goals and the strategic plan, the diversity, equity, inclusion is woven between the board goals and the strategic plan. The way this is set out is each of the goals and the strategic work that the board has outlined in the design of their goals, and these are the the updates from between the fall and this this past winter. I'll just speak real quickly to, again, highlights, and I won't leave anything out consciously or otherwise. And I'll certainly happy to come back to things if the board would like to do that. But the main scenario here, maximize safety and security, we've done a lot, as you know, around the security, where our Dragger Security just started yesterday, all the work that the board has done and the review of our interventions for SSOs and Dragger Security, they have come to fruition. I have a call tomorrow about checking in with Karma as to where our report is. And we have had administrative feedback on that, has been given to Karma, we have met with them and provided that. So we're just awaiting that final report. I should receive an update on that tomorrow. The completion of monthly drills of the new alerta system up and running. And the security needs as addressed through the FY twenty-four budget, we've done a lot of discussion this year around safety and security. If you want, go ahead, pause, Mr. Chairman, or just move.
Sure, we can go goal to goal. That's fine. Any questions with respect to board goal one?
Alan, I think we're going to have at some point an update on sort of just a pre-implementation update. Is that on the twenty-fourth? So what, before we start finally hiring SSOs and before we start putting them into schools?
A pre-implementation.
Sort of what your plan is?
We talked about just a time of hiring, of training, of communication.
Yes, okay.
Teacher, communication, school, parent, student, kind of how that all works.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Yeah. So this is the mental health wellness of students and staff. Again, it may seem redundant a little bit in terms of the topics, but it's not surprising because they're the goals, they're the things that we've been working on, they have the resources at the board. Well, it's not surprising because they're the goals, they're the things that we've been working on, they have the resources that the board has supported. So I would hope along the way, there are, there's, I won't, I won't call it redundancy, it's actually doing what we said and we set out to do. So the mental health director has been hired. We're continuing to work with the town's mental health task force in particular. The Behavioral Health Subcommittee that continues to be up and running. And we we serve on that. And we have, we thank the PTO for their work on bringing Mark Brackett here. We've done a lot of work on the round of SEL and Ruler, the universal screener we talked about this morning, actually at the Curriculum Committee meeting. We, the ADL is actually working with the middle school this Friday, as we continue the work and support for our staff and our students. Those, those are, we just released today the SEL website. I'll pause there.
Questions on Board Goal Two? Julie?
Thank you. Doctor, just the last bullet there, facilitated SEL meetings for parents across elementary schools. What were those?
I think that was Miss Miss Droller, Miss Droller rolled out the SEL workshops.
And I believe every elementary school did a parent coffee on Ruler. I believe it was every school, but I can confirm.
A year two of of the strategic plan, so that this was the board goal of just to oversee the year two of that particular plan. Some of that was through the work that I have done, and we have discussed some of that in the mid-year evaluation follow-up. We have scheduled these these strategic plan updates and provide regular board updates. We've tried to align and support the budget to add the strategic goals themselves.
Anything on Board Goal Three? Julie?
Thank you. We have here strategic work to revise strategic plan to meet district needs. I think that was an as-needed or if-needed item, as I recall, but we, I appreciate that we refer regularly to how things align with the strategic plan. What I don't feel we do as often is start at the strategic plan and say, are there any of these things that we need to make sure we're coming back to more? So I don't know when or where, but I think it would be a valuable exercise to spend some time just on the strategic plan pulling out of instead of kind of putting things into it, if that makes any sense at all. Just rather than these are our items and this is how they align, this is our plan. And are we, are we act, doing actionable things on all of the items included in it?
I would say that work would work both ways, Julie. Yes, some of it align, but others comes directly out of for professional development. The work of the DEI. So from those strategies and from those actions that are outlined, and we're actually trying to check boxes. Are are we doing those actions? Are we following through with those outcomes that are coming directly from the strategy or from the action?
Right.
But I understand.
Yes, and I'm not suggesting that we're not doing things in keeping with the strategic plan. I think just to keep ourselves honest as an exercise, it's of value to go back through the plan in total and make sure that we're considering all the pieces and not, not every meeting, not every month, just at some point.
Maybe on a Saturday.
There you go. On a Saturday would be perfect.
I think, Julie, my follow-up to that would be, I think, Jill and I have talked about this, is that I think where you're heading is that we agreed that that strategic document was a living document. And so I think rather than constantly referencing back to the document, or I know we're not just checking boxes, but where where does that strategic document need to change? You know, based on some things that have changed for us. So I think that it would be a good exercise. Anything else on Board Goal Three?
So enhanced the district communications, we know the work of the of the committee and the establishment of the committee. The update of the district website for social and emotional learning. One of the areas where I don't think that we, and I'll take responsibility for this, the idea of this as much of a celebration of of students and staff achievements. That's something I think I need to calibrate again in the second semester here, how to move forward with that a little bit. But you can see the things that are pointed out here.
Questions? Sure, Katie.
Sorry, I just want to, I guess I want to go back to Goal Two. I was trying to see.
Goal Two?
Yeah, I I was trying to see how this might all come together. And I see that you reference that the DEI component of this is embedded into Goal Two, which makes sense when we're talking about the mental health and wellbeing of of our community. But I have to ask specifically where where we think that we're at with that. And maybe if we're, if we are at a place where we'd hoped to be and the work that we need to do, public comment tonight, looking at the budget and.
Work goal two or strategic plan also? I think you mean strategic plan goal two.
I don't think we're there yet. I'm sorry, maybe, did I jump?
I think you said that year three implementation of strategic plan, board goal three, but it'll come in in a strategic plan. When I get there, I'll address that, okay?
No, it's all good. Anything else on Board Goal Four, Communications?
So is that, is that cricket, the communications subcommittee meeting rescheduled, or is that just, are we just moving to the next one?
So we will move to the next one. We will send out a template to board members and ask with directions of how to complete that. It'll also go to staff members. That will sort of will take a little bit of an audit from where we stand with communication from your input. We can get the raw data from you and then we can tidy it up.
And then the next meeting is February fifteenth to answer your question.
So move on to Strategic Plan Goal One.
So from this for enhancing the teaching and learning, we've done a lot in terms of working with the PTO committee and providing soliciting meaningful feedback to them and providing that in order to provide them with the professional development that they need. The work of the teaching, teaching and learning principles, that work has been ongoing and the feedback has been offered. Has been provided from the staff. We have, we have gotten our math consultant. We've worked with the math consultant along the way here, this particular fall. We've had visitors from Netherlands who's come to observe our gifted education program. And we'll continue with the the gifted report to guide the work. And also, once we get to the the I committee, I'll talk about that.
Thing on strategic plan goal.
Chris, do you want to emphasize anything else, Chris?
Just point out, the state is also sponsoring IST, they're, they're sponsoring IST certification, which is typically eight hundred dollars a person for teachers to get certified and have the IST endorsement. So we have twenty teachers and administrators going through that process right now. I'm one of them. I did not realize that forty hours of work that they said it would be would actually be forty hours of work. So I am learning quite a bit through the process.
Welcome aboard.
Just after your previous comment, Duke, I'm not a big fan of living documents. That being said, in terms of strategic plan, we want to like crack open some of what we have and take a look at it and have that be work done by the board versus the prior work that was done with the hinky consultant. I would welcome that opportunity.
Thanks, Dave.
So on strategic goal, goal two, we talk about the wellness, diversity and inclusion. Clearly, the work with the health and wellness of of our students is is paramount. And the board has, under mental health and social emotional learning, the board has supported that particular work. We've talked about Mark Brackett coming here, so on and so forth, and those types of experiences. Our staff is here this morning and talking about how they're supporting SEL from pre-K right through twelfth grade. I will say in the, in the in the area of DEI and to address Katie and also for some comments that were made tonight. Let me say this, it's wasn't that long ago where our young people were in front of us. And it wasn't that long ago where we have painful experiences. They're not easy to get over. And then they're not easy, easy to deal with. And it just doesn't. We just don't heal just after a couple of months of that. And I want to commend the staff and the members of the community for their support for our young people through this process because it continues to be ongoing. In the area of DEI, it's hard work. Difficult work. I look at, I look at my community members. And I applaud them for staying the course. But I know how frustrating it can be. I know how difficult it can be. But we must stay the course, from my perspective. Our teachers must feel and our students must feel supported first and foremost by me. Then by their ministers team and also, I think by our board. It's completely important that they feel that way. It's difficult work and we are going to, and we have, we have mistakes along the way. But we can't crucify people for making mistakes in a very difficult arena. So it's important that we we sustain our efforts. I understand some people may not think it's fast enough, quick enough. It's never going to be a quick process. But I applaud those people who, and I think we collectively, as a group, as a board, as a community members and as a staff, have the courage and professional will, passion to do the work. And we'll sustain that work and it's important to continue it for our young people. So while it may be frustrating, and I can understand the frustration maybe of some of our DEI committees or otherwise, I'm very hopeful that the work of the major committee, the I committee of the district will bring forth powerful recommendations for us to move forward on. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it open.
Questions on that strategic plan goal two?
Thank you. It's it's difficult to even to put the question together. So thank you for bearing with me. And I appreciate your comments, Dr. Adley, about looking back to where we've been and and how we go forward. And I think that you're exactly right, that it is a long and difficult road that, you know, we kind of have to be committed to to walking together. And I think part of the reason why, I apologize again for my misstep with the the board goals, but the two, the two really are tied, right? If, if, you know, the board wants to support the mental wellbeing of our students, that is tied to the strategic plan goal for promoting wellness and and DEI is a component of that. So, so I guess my my question is to you and 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 I I like the bullets and it's a good reminder of where we've been, but as we're in budget season, you know, do we have enough resources built in to to continue the work in a meaningful way? And are we looking at areas of of supporting, you know, the the PTOs, I think, have been really, really trying so hard to to put, you know, grassroots committees in within the schools, working with people. But I can imagine that they they need quite a bit of guidance. And the principals are, have always worked so well with the PTOs and been grateful. But again, this is just a massive topic and undertaking. So I certainly don't have the answers, but I think it behooves us to to keep asking the questions and looking, you know, are we doing enough? Is there another area? You know, are there people that are hurting and and things that that we might be able to step in to before, before they escalate?
Thank you, Katie.
Any other questions, comments? Did you go plan goal three?
I'll just point to the this third goal, the work of the the high school in preparation for his accreditation visit in twenty-four. I'd say that the main thing that we're trying to do here, it's just initially got started is really the committee that works. We'll look at the elementary version of this interpretation of it because it's important to the graduate, it's meant to be worked on from kindergarten through twelfth grade. So that that it's really getting that that committee pressure completely established and up and running. The committee has been established, but we have to just get it operationalized. That's the main thing for now.
Questions?
Just like the fall twenty twenty-two updates, portion of the graduate competencies embedded in the new EduPlanet twenty-one. Where's the evaluation component?
That's a great question. So the way that we've embedded each of those competencies, you would choose those competencies when the actual performance task or assessment that you're using within that unit aligns to that competency. So if you have, there are, I think there's forty-eight or forty-nine total competencies. You're not going to have more than hopefully one that would exist within a unit to say that what we're doing in this course aligns and supports it. We're hoping not to create ninety-five new assignments to measure the portrait of the graduates. Want to show this is where we already are are doing this.
So I guess the assessment question is asking, and I don't remember all of them either, but the one that kind of sticks out was something along the lines of like speaks with a loud and authoritative or takes to be somehow speaks effectively or with presence or something along those lines. But how do I know that a teacher taught a kid how to do that? Wasn't the parent, it wasn't a grandparent, it wasn't a coach? How do I have any idea as we move into Portrait of the Graduate that our teachers are actually imparting these skills, these vague areas, as opposed to like, if I give the math test and somebody knows how to multiplication, that's easy because probably it wasn't a soccer coach who taught. How do I do the evaluation with these sort of vacuous goals that we've established?
So when one of those competencies is identified within that unit, it would be the expectation that there's an instructional component that would cause you to be measuring it within that unit.
But how do we tie that back that was delivered by the teacher?
I guess that would apply to anything, like some kids come to school and can already read, but the so even though a student might already have a skill, there's a range of skills that come with like public speaking, that's a really good example. Some people have natural abilities to just stand and deliver without instruction. Other people need to overcome the skills. But just like everything that has standards, we would have some type of a rubric or measurement tool that would say, this is the expectation. And some students, like with math acceleration, some students can demonstrate the skill after five minutes of instruction. Some could have demonstrated without any minutes of instruction.
So you mean the aptitude, the capacity, but probably kids aren't sitting by themselves trying to figure out how to divide fractions. Like, that's probably an instructional and you can tie that back pretty clearly. So the goals here, you seem like they don't have the same sort of direct tie-in. And that's what's concerned me about the Portrait of the Graduate effort from the beginning, is how do we have accountability? And how do we assess the actual impact that the teachers are making as we deliver on these goals?
Any other questions or comments?
Chris, are you going to talk about vision? Because you've got some implementation work that's coming up. Is that something that maybe, are you going to talk in front of curriculum again in the near future? And is that an area that you could answer?
Yeah, so the next step would be when we have the parallel language developed for elementary. Because ultimately, it goes back to the end points. If you're not measuring what you have for your vision of the graduate, what's the, why do you have it? So yes, it's, I would say it's the most important part.
Okay, thank you. And will you bring some examples? Because I, you know, I'm listening to you.
Yes, for abstract right now, yes.
Sure. Yes, thank you.
All good questions. We'll move on to Strategic Plan Goal Four.
So this is primarily based on providing professional development for staff based on their, on on their feedback. But here's an example, Miss Bass, where the strategy is to attract and retain diverse educators. I believe a manifestation of that is directly our teacher contract. That's exactly what it does. Now, you could say it aligns to that or it's just driven from. This, it isn't a live document, right? It doesn't just sit on the shelf. We try to regularly review it, not just for these meetings, are we moving in that direction? I'm so pleased that the board's working along, along this particular, on this topic of the teacher contract, actually was designed to to do exactly just that, to attract and retain our our teacher and staff and support them. And so that was another big big example here of of how we've done that in this particular, in this particular strategic goal. I won't read all the separate ones, but
Questions?
The communication.
I I hesitated. You have, we just talked about it. We have on there the bottom of the Wilson training. Can we just have an update of the status of who in our, in terms of numbers, not people, but what, how deep that training in Wilson is, just so we have a, we're commonly conversant.
Yeah, we spoke about this on Saturday. We have seven currently who are going for level one certification. And I did say that I prepare a memorandum to Dr. Adley to share with the board.
Great.
The scope of of how many teachers are trained and already what levels they are.
Great.
In both general and special education.
Thank you.
So the the communication system and effective communications, clearly, we'll always be able to do better than we're doing. Again, this was addressing the board goal that preceded this particular section, that the the work of the actual board committee and some of the examples that I've shared tonight from the SEL website and so on. Can I say under, under strategic goals, sex, like? Can I say under under strategical sex like that? Uh we 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 did, we did the presentation tonight, but. I couldn't be any more excited for our young people and for our families of the work that. We see these things, um but to see them to come to life in these buildings. And to realize what we've accomplished together as a community uh for our young people and our youngest children is just. It's tremendously exciting for me as a superintendent. Um I I just want to share the board and the community members who are here and online. It is for our staff too, uh they're excited about this, these uh. These facilities that uh. Uh we're providing both to them and and to to our students. Uh I just don't want to overlook them. Those are major things. Those are major accomplishments, uh heavy lifts along the way and. And we're not waiting for generations of kids to go through uh before they experience them. So. Uh thank you to the board and to the members of of our community for the support of those particular projects. And this really sort of talks to some of those milestones along the way.
Good questions or comments?
So long the technology to support teaching learning, of course, we have the edge of planet. Um we've had a new wireless net, no, excuse me, a new wireless network that. Uh we've rolled out that which means that um. Watch our John go to. All the universities around the place, they can they can lock that and no matter where they go, we are using that particular network. I will say that I I know we had a roll out of of the teacher devices to the teachers of B Y D, but the actual B Y D itself. Uh the implementation of it has gone uh successful. Lovely, I won't read everything, but those are just a couple of things.
As your voice fades.
Just a wee bit, yeah.
I just wanted to follow up on some of the conversation around from Saturday around the the rollout to the teachers. Um and I understand that, you know, we kind of settled that. A large difference was that it was a new technology versus just an upgrade, but I am curious, given um. You know, the the anecdotal stories that we heard about that kind of difficult time. Perhaps maybe just how we're looking at lessons learned from that in order to better future rollouts and. Um prevent such problems from going and we don't need to go into it necessarily, but I think it's worth highlighting that that. It's great to look at our goals and to acknowledge our milestones, but it's also important to look at maybe where we made a misstep in order to prevent. Future things from happening again.
We would recognize that. We have done that. We have done an internal review of of. Of particularly the role like uh to the teacher staff at at the high school for the new devices. Yes, we have done that.
Dave, just real quick, I'm led to winter twenty three uh roll forward on the iPad Pro. I thought. And I could be remembering this wrong. I thought we had a discussion last year about why we're giving two devices out to the high school teachers and we said we're just going to do one. So are we still going forward or did we agree to give two devices? We did agree to, okay.
We we, yes, we did.
All right, thanks.
And that that item specifically connects to Katie's question on. What did you learn from the last thing that happened? Um. We did a more controlled, gave it to a group of teachers, asked for feedback. They did troubleshooting with the device. We made a tip sheet. Uh so when that happens, we won't have a recurrence.
And we didn't make, we did make, but not only to be to review, we did meet the staff to talk about. The rule light.
Yes, yeah, just on this, on this topic especially, I think, and it was brought up on Saturday and I think Julie kind of referenced it as well tonight is. I think we need to also bring in the metrics of, because a lot of this is rolling out implementation, expanding. I think we need to bring back and say evaluate what these what these programs are and how well or not they are succeeding, especially in this. In this uh strategic plan and maybe we as a board need to take that up as a. As a meeting or or at least give some guidance to you to as to what we're expecting, or maybe you come back to us and we pick through it, but I think we need a. An agenda item maybe specifically to that.
Well, it may also be, it may also include what the board chair has often said about what's the implementation at the at the student instructional level at the teacher level.
Good, thanks, Dennis. Good, all right, thank you everyone.
Sure, thank you, thank you for burning with me.
Sorry, one more. I just want to go back for one quick second to go for. I was holding it, trying not to jump ahead. Strategic plan goal for expanding the capacity of the staff. Um, I I appreciate that most of the focus on this is about professional capacity as in terms of. Of learning more curriculum and methods and 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 ways to implement. Um but I do just want to. Ask about. The capacity of our staff and how we might be supporting them in terms of. Of their their them as whole people and employees and how their jobs have grown in. Difficulty exponentially and and just the the challenges that the field is facing. Um and the ways that we see that when it comes to attrition. So I'm just curious if. If there is either something that might be in here worth highlighting or something to think about in the future about. Other ways that we can make sure that our staff has the capacity to just. Take in all the different nuances that come with their job and and be able to come back every day.
Um I'll comment on the March wants to say anything. I will just check this another wee opportunity, just as a track and retain even diverse educators, right? Um and some people may have said in the budget and it was tough dilemma uh for me personally, um professionally as a superintendent that. Uh the teaching residence program maybe didn't align to that or that was going away from that. Uh it's not just a straight line. Um but it doesn't mean to say we're going away from it. I will say that I rec- I appreciate your recognition of of. Of the challenges of of the teaching profession right now. I won't try to simplify it, right, but certainly uh continue to work on the on the working conditions and the climate. Uh within the 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 district. And anytime where we have an opportunity to. Vocally or otherwise, actually support our our staff. This is not a an easy district to work on. Those will be the words of the D E A president, right? Um and and he's right. And it's challenging, um and there's a lot of scrutiny. And sometimes there's a lot of criticism, right? Um so as long as there's a balance of of support and they and that we maintain and. Uh that our staff feels supported by their superintendent, their administration, uh their principals. Uh and members of the board, that is the biggest thing that that we could give to any of the teachers. Um yes, other things, but. Um you can give them resources and uh. Uh instructional materials and so on, so forth, and they're all important things, but the actual support to do the work. Uh they feel fundamentally supported to do the work and have an opportunity to take some risks along the way. I think that's the thing that they would feel most appreciative of and would be most uh helpful to them. Having said that, uh Marge, if you want to add anything else that you can.
Well, no, I think some of the things that we gave in the teacher's contract have gone a long way to create a positive working environment. And as long as Dr. Adley opened the door a little bit in the exit interviews that I've been conducting recently. They're having a very difficult time with the demands being made on them by the parents and the tone that's being used with them and I. Struggled with whether to say it publicly, but it's becoming an increasingly common theme in exit interviews and I I'm not sure what to do about it except to name it in public.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit, Marge, in terms of what what per se are the parents?
Demands that are far exceeding what they're used to in the past, you know, I mean, I have specific, you know, if a deadline is. November fifteenth for something for the college, the parent will call and demand it on October fifteenth and, you know, they don't know, they don't know what to do. And just kind of the tone and you know, I know we're all feeling stressed after COVID, but. Um you know, I can go back and look at my notes and get specific things, but.
Yeah, I don't want you to tip anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just be curious to know what the nature of it is and you know, one comment I've heard. You know, a concern of some parents is that we're giving them too much beyond just teaching. So they want to just teach. They don't want to be. Guidance counselors, they don't want to be psychologists, they don't want to be doing a lot of these other initiatives that we foisted on them and so. That's adding to some of the demanding, I don't know if that's something you've heard or if that's something you look at.
I haven't heard that, but that doesn't mean it's not true, but I haven't heard that.
And I I think what they'd like to do also is like, keep me in the classroom, don't be pulling me out for administrative trivia stuff. I think they're um. Mister Brown, I think they'll be very uh committed to doing S E L work, mental health work, but but when we drag them out or disruptions or. Otherwise, uh I think those are things that are challenged and for them, they want to be in the classroom with the kids all the time and rightly so. And and even some of our professional development, it's a it's a conundrum. It pulls them out from the very place where you want them to be. So that that continues to be. Minister of Challenge for us.
Thank you. Thanks, Marge. We'll move on to follow up discussion on January seventh board meeting, questions on twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four proposed Board of Education budget. Dr. Adley.
So thank you for the discourse on Saturday. It was extremely helpful. I I want to appreciate. Um the principals and anybody else who contributed to this, particularly the cabinet and. Mister Roodler and so on for putting together the responses to the for the board questions again for the members who are here. Uh the other respective organizations and committees will get their responses. I'll copy the board those two uh by Friday. Uh so uh you'll see here, um we have responded to each of these. I won't read. Read each of them. If you want to go through them, pause and move on. I can maybe talk to you highlights if for one or two or otherwise, but. Um you can see the the descriptions that we have. For the most part, the the mental health team talk and so on. Uh was part of a presentation. Most of those questions are for at the twenty fourth, uh so we'll we'll prepare those along with anything. Or most things from Fitch uh will be a presentation on the twenty fourth. So Mister Chark, if you if you would like to just go through them sequentially or. Whatever the board preferences.
We can go through, let's just go through uh page one. I mean, some we this just. Came to us at the end of the day, really, so um. I don't know if anyone's read them or we want to do it as a takeaway and we'll be more prepared at the next meeting.
Yeah, I just have one question.
Yeah, sure.
So the um the psychologist caseload, the the link that's in this document is to the same. What was given to us before? Can we get a little more? I mean, the mean, we talked to her the when this was before, like, can we get a little more detail about? It are there some that have six? Are there some that have seventy six? Like, I I would love to get an idea of how the actual caseload for. Each psychologist. I don't know how much work that is to do, but I just.
Can we just name it by each? I don't mean the person, but but.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I think it would be helpful just so we have an idea of what each person is actually doing in what department or which level.
Dave, just a quick follow up to that request. I believe when we originally approved the additional psychologists, we had sort of a calendar view. Of meetings for a week for somebody anonymized.
In a day in the lead.
Yeah, well, I think it was a week or two, but yeah, that that'd be helpful as well.
It could.
Uh just by way, this is where this is designed, if um it makes like a bit of confusion to you, the question numbers are just in the left. Um the second column is the R C's and it may not come in order suddenly because that's the way it came on Saturday.
Sure, good.
And if the board members have any questions between now and. Monday, if you send them to us, we can we can we can add to it.
Did this go out to um? Uh Board of Finance, C D S P and R T M?
No, I want the board to stay at first tonight.
I I would send it out to them.
Or post it, yeah.
Yeah.
On uh question one, I I see that under P E and health, you're looking for an average class size of twenty two, um which. I I know that. Um I actually wanted to understand what the what the um spread would be. Have a little bit of a better sense, just because I want to understand whether I want to keep in compliance with our class size model. And so average doesn't help me understand if we hit highs and lows. I get that you're trying to model it and it's not actual enrollment, but just wanted to understand that, please.
Julie.
Um just two quick questions. One is a calendar question. We have that the Board of Finance final vote is on Tuesday, April sixth, but I'm pretty sure April sixth is a Thursday. And there are Board of Finance meetings scheduled on both that Tuesday and the Thursday, so we should clarify that. Um and then it might just a glance through this quickly. Is this all of the robotics? Answers that we're getting so far, or is there a?
So this this is uh that uh these are the robotic responses. If the board, I I'm trying not to give a like a lot of presentation to you. I mean, if you want a presentation on it, that's fine, we can do that.
Okay.
Um but we thought we were able to answer the questions and.
And see if it gets us there.
Suffices, then fine. If it doesn't, it would certainly.
Understood, thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Dennis? Okay.
So they the April sixth meeting is is the same as a proof that uh. That we have on the actual calendar of the. Budget calendar that was published, so I don't. Is that a different day?
Somehow we, none of us ever caught it, but April sixth is a Thursday and not a Tuesday, but they do, like I said, they have meetings on both. The Tuesday and the Thursday according to the town calendar, so.
We'll check, but I think it's correct.
So we'll look through these and anything we can email into myself or Sarah or Jill and. We'll continue. Is there any, if there's any more clarity or? All right, good.
If our students have any questions about it, you can also our student reps, you can certainly email them too.
Sure. All right, is that it? Any other questions on the board calendar? Okay. Personnel report is there for your review, Marge. Special ed teacher, special ed para, science teacher, kind of tough losing people in January.
Right, so the special ed para is a good story. She's going to do her practicum to become school counselor, so that's a, that's a great, that's great news.
Then we can hire her back.
We we will go looking for her and and yeah, the other two are, it's hard, but they're working on it.
Okay. What's your pipeline like for hires?
Normally, there would have been a group of people who graduated in December, but we haven't seen that this year.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything you need, resource wise?
Keep pushing out advertisements and people contacting universities and.
Okay.
We keep finding people to interview, right?
Good, okay.
I I know it's in the budget, but just to be clear, that resignation of this special ed teacher is strapping a. Department that was already a little tight in special ed resources, correct? The department chair, as I understand it, is.
Trying, well, we've had, we've had medical leaves also and teachers leaving, so those teachers have been covering all year long for people. Okay.
So Marge, just for my own, um. These folks, the the one, the science teacher resigned on the twenty first. Do we have, what's our commit? They have to stay thirty days?
Thirty calendar days.
Thirty calendar days.
So that should be, I can't, that's their last day.
Oh, these these days are their last days. Okay, all right, thanks. All right. With that, um I will move back over to public comment. Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom, Michelle?
If anyone on Zoom would like to public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Barry Palmer.
Thank you. Hi, Barry.
Hello, I'm trying to uh start my video here. Okay, I figured I would um chime in. I didn't have anything prepared, but I think the conversation. Towards the end there, um drifted a little bit into my territory, um. You you know, it is challenging to say publicly that. There ha- there, one of the reasons teachers do leave is because of the pressures uh from. Um parents and I will say. The vast, vast majority of my dealings with parents have been very positive, but I. There is a bit of a reputation with Darien and similar towns that when you go there. Often the warning is watch out for those parents. Um when I I caught in another Fairfield County District. That's not quite as affluent as Darien, but. Uh pretty, pretty affluent too, and when I told people where I was going, I didn't really get congratulations. I got. Look out for those parents. So I do think that is important for the community to know that's part of the rep- reputation of. Of the of the district. Um with that said, and I have had some difficult, challenging conversations with parents, the vast majority. Are positive, but um. I wouldn't just, you know, I wanted to to kind of back up what Marge said there. There's also a fear sometimes that. Administration might not necessarily back us up with with challenging parents, so I think that's important. Feedback for them to have too, and sometimes it's perception versus reality, right? Um I would like, I'm pretty sure. Administrators would think they they tend to, you know, um hold the line uh as best as they can too. So I want I want to be fair to everyone involved. With that, I don't want um. The takeaway to be like, oh, the parents are terrible in Darien, because that's not the case. Again, the vast majority are very positive, but the. There are some some doozies, I think that pretty much every teacher in the district will tell you they've experienced that do stick out and over time. Can have, um it could it could get trying, so it can be a a difficult district to work in sometimes. As much as I love it and I can't left another tenured position from a great district to come here. So it's just, it kind of comes with the territory of teaching here. So I just figured I'd throw in my two cents on that. Thank you guys for all your hard work on the budget too.
Um thanks, Barry.
Fun to watch, okay.
Anyone else on Zoom?
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Julie, second. Katie, all those in favor?
Thank you, everyone.